Hey, call meeting in order.
Aaron?
Here.
Carl?
Yeah.
Joan?
Yeah.
Andy?
Here. Charlie?
Toby?
Well, yeah, I was drinking lemon. Lime.
Girl, you here?
Okay.
Wait, 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 one, so I'm in line. I'm gonna issue my like.
I'm not. I have this agreement.
Karen? Karen? Did you get to that, you're done?
No.
With Penix? They haven't sent me an email about the registration to the event.
Why?
They asked me. Oh, they asked me, I really have seen this.
He was a week time to. You ready?
Yeah.
I tried. Yeah. Spike was, uh, sending her a paper to mail.
Are you?
Didn't see that coming.
No.
That we were in.
We're using numbers.
Everybody, yeah, we know.
You got it.
Okay. So.
Lisa, do you have a spare thing? Copy, please. I told you to take it the other day.
And I had no. The numbers the other day. Come on.
Okay. We will.
Page twelve.
Page twelve. All right. We will. Start.
Um. This isn't the updated.
Any changes to your budget?
Uh, we reduced the budget. Um, I, I, there's one thing I'd like to put back in the budget that I took out. Um, but I don't want it on the, the line item. So I took the, the money for the clerk out of the budget, but I'd like to put it in under a, maybe leave it under the, uh, contractual. Instead of our clerk position that'll allow some flexibility in case we decide where the clerk or the office decides to pursue a clerk next year after I terminate the contract.
So do you want me to add the forty seven hundred that we budgeted last year and add it to the seventy seven hundred?
That would be, yeah, that's what I'm requesting. It may or may not be used, but I, I would prefer to do it that way than to ask the town board mid-year for additional funds.
Yeah.
So, so you're taking the forty seven hundred and adding that to the seventy seven?
I had originally pulled it out of the budget completely. And it's gone to my attention, I may want to leave some flexibility there in case there is a determination that seasonal help may be, um, necessary within that office.
Okay. Yeah, and that, obviously, we saw this year that if it's anything next year, like it has, has been, it's been busy.
But you want me to keep the forty seven hundred on the fire inspector?
Uh, yes, please, although that may, most likely will not get used that year.
It will?
That's what I wanted to know because.
Well, that's, no, forty seven hundred for fire inspector, which line are we looking at, I'm sorry?
Me, thirty six twenty.
The twelve.
Yeah.
I'm on the eight.
Page twelve. That's why I wonder though. You here?
Uh, thank you. I remember last little, it's like a one or a B one.
And it would be nice if I could pull it, but I know each year.
Fund.
You talking about the thirty six twenty?
No.
That was, no.
Yeah, thirty six twenty dot one two.
Thirty six, oh, thirty six one, one, two for the forty seven.
You told me to remove the forty seven hundred from the CEO clerk and add it to the fire.
Yeah, that'd be fine, yep, no, that's right, yes, let's do that. And that gives me flexibility to use, that'll be additional forty seven hundred, no, that's fine.
Okay, so even in the way it is.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
I didn't realize you moved into that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Um. Yes, that would allow either a clerk or a.
That's what you said to me, that's why I was surprised.
No, I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we.
No.
I thought we just took it out, I didn't realize it was back in.
I'm sorry, that's why we have this. Anything else?
No, we, we did, I believe we do have a reduction in the overall budget from last year, and I also will just state that, uh, I believe the revenues are, are considered, we left the revenues alone, with five, uh, six thousand that office coming in.
Yeah, I mean, what I'd kind of do is look at it and do an average or something, you know, kind of history and things like that.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Fifteen?
Some people fill it out, some don't, and I just kind of look at where we are here today, kind of get some kind of history and then it's just a guess, and then I mean.
No, it's okay, we've been usually underestimating that number the last few years, and we've, uh, made our budget. So this year we went up to eight thousand, so that's, that's probably in line accurate, okay? Cause we've usually been right around the nine thousand hour mark, uh, eight to nine thousand dollars mark the last couple of years. During my first year in after COVID, things were, I think it was seven thousand hour mark, if I remember correct. But this year we're on pace for, for definitely in the nine to ten.
And one thing I did do is I caught last year the franchise time work kale should have gone under the B fund, and it used to be. And when June was here, cause I wondered, how come all of a sudden we went, you know, so I started going back with the history. And when June was supervising, she was coding them for me, so I just did what, so I'm putting it backward then.
So it should be the eleven seventy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, that was always there, but I didn't know why all of a sudden we don't have it, then I started going back and running at the prior years.
Right.
And I realized a change from June came.
Right.
And she was coding everything, so.
Our, our permits this year are down, um, our revenue is up. Uh, I contribute that partially to, uh, both the increase in our fee structure slightly, but more or less, I think this beat our revenue is up due to the fact that people are building houses and building bigger projects than they were the past couple of years, our housing starts are up um, a lot compared to last year and definitely the year before. We're not seeing as many as like small sheds and stacks type of stuff, or we're seeing pole barns and actual construction, either renovations of housing, we're seeing additions put onto housing, and we're seeing new housing starts, whether it's manufactured homes, modulars, or stick-built construction. Uh, that's taking place a lot more, which is making us busier, um, but that's part of the reason why the fees have increased this year.
Okay.
That's all I got. Unless there's questions.
All right. Okay. So thirty minutes.
Page three.
Um, I left money in for a clerk, I do not intend to bring Marsha back into my office, the idea behind the money in the clerk is when I sit down to have informals, if it's more than I can handle, I'm gonna need to bring someone in, whether it be Leslie or another assessor, or just someone to sit there and, and listen to the people and take notes. And so I can sit down and go over the paperwork after, but hopefully I can do it in the mouth.
So.
It's a slush fund, just in case.
You can't say that already.
All right. I won't say it, but it is. It's, it's there.
It's a.
It's a reserve in case, in case I run out of meat.
Yeah. Understood.
Yes.
Um, but with, with that being said, and with the fact that you're doing the rebound, um, is, is that gonna be sufficient?
Yes. Yes, because really, it's only gonna be a month
Okay.
of intense. I mean, for that situation. Mine will continue on through May, but. Yeah.
Okay. And, and we'll be able to get a person properly qualified?
Yeah, I, they don't, like I said, there's other assessors out there, I've seen it, um, when Fleming did their reassessment and took it from like twenty seven percent up, he pulled in another assessor.
Yeah.
Town, just to that person isn't going to work through it with the, the resident, it's just let the resident talk.
Hmm.
Take notes. Accept pictures or direct them or to email pictures.
Sorry. That's all I have on.
Yeah, um, other than that, it's pretty and hopefully that extra three, the three thousand, I'm hoping unless postage goes up crazy again. Um, because my next round of mailing will be in March, townwide. And then after that, it will be another mailing in May for any changes that happen between March and May. And then I'm done for the reval mailings.
Okay. Yeah, just, I learned this the other day, I don't think a lot of people know this, but you know, the post office is increasing the rate of postage just for the holiday season this year.
Yeah.
From November first until Janu- January first, they're, they're up in postage.
That's why I use your forever stamps I bought in two thousand.
I was gonna say, then I better get out and get my stamps.
That's, that's like PSA. I didn't, didn't want to throw off the meeting, but that was my PSA, cause I just learned that the other day.
From nowadays, I piss everybody off, so I don't have to send any Christmas cards. Same principle, I don't spend any extra.
I don't have, you don't have girlfriend before Christmas?
No, but it's exemption season, I'll be sending out exemptions, so.
Well, it matters to you.
It, it matters. So I'll post it on early.
Um, I think it has to be postmarked there.
That's, well, if we run it through our regime.
I say run it all through now.
So when?
When does?
When? Pick the date that they're gonna be increasing it, do it the date before.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure.
Why not? Did you have anything, any other?
Nothing else is crazy, you know, I, I did not put in additional paid for myself for the reassessment, I just, just to let everybody know, I'm just going with what my, my salary is. So when, you know, here, you hear towns screaming that, you know, somebody is, um, gouging money, um, through this reassessment process, or the town is trying to bring in extra tax dollars. No, we didn't hire an outside service, I didn't take extra money for it. This is Davis Quap.
Thank you.
Just, I may need a box of hair dye when it's all done.
I think we can get that. All right. Any questions for Becky? No? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that will do it for the departments.
And I looked at the fire contracts and your budget was correct.
Yeah, I stopped it.
Okay. So the only thing I didn't change, Andy, is I brought the tax cap form, I probably want to weekend, because, okay, because I didn't touch the taxes. I leave it up to you, okay.
Is it? Yeah. Just the player contract.
That was it.
Right? That, right.
Okay. Yeah, that was it. Okay, so, um, does anybody else have anything for the budget? You know?
I, I just, I talked to Pat, um, a little earlier about sales tax. Have you heard, Jonathan, have you heard anything about what's being projected for our potential sales tax? Did I not hear at a recent county meeting that they're anticipating the sales tax revenues will be gone down? Did I hear that?
The sales tax revenue for this year is not estimated, is not we are estimating now that it will not meet our full cap for twenty twenty four by roughly one million dollars.
But it's the county level. Which means that yeah, I'm just kind of project because.
I, I know what that means, the distribution to the town, village.
Right, right. Right. And we do, we're very conservative when we budget for the sales tax.
We do, we always budget under.
Um. So that's why I was trying to get a sense of what we might anticipate for twenty twenty four. I'm assuming in twenty twenty three originally, I didn't go back to the original budget, but I probably we budgeted what, um, four hundred fifty thousand between the two?
Well, if you look at the report here, it will, it will tell you pretty much where we were in twenty twenty three. But you wanna know what we budgeted in twenty twenty three?
Yeah. Probably the same, a hundred thousand and B and DB three hundred fifty thousand.
I, I really, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be my guess.
I don't know how pertains across, across for Sterling and Joan, but across the state there, there's been a um, sales tax has been on the decline year over year or slightly, and they're forecasting next year to be declining as well, and that's not just for Kewa County. That's for all counties and New York City, that's across the state.
Right, right.
It's been, uh, NISAC, and I'm sure the Association of Towns has done the same thing. Um, it's, it's been pretty consistent among the jurisdictions across the state. Uh, the dollar amounts aren't the same, but the percentages are the same. So I, I would, I would imagine the county is in the process and we are, you know, more unlikely forecasting another sales tax flat or steadily.
So at the, for the town, in twenty twenty three, assuming we budgeted four fifty, we ended up with about six hundred twenty thousand. Um, this year to date with two sales tax checks, um, and I, well, it's roughly, was it a hundred plus three fifty? Yeah, but we did budget that, um, this year for sales tax. And we've got three hundred fifty eight thousand, hundred eighty three dollars so far. So I, I'm sure we're gonna meet that, but I'm just wondering.
We have two checks left.
Correct.
And we, we budgeted in the DB fund two eighty four, we've already flexed it two eighty seven, and the B fund, we budgeted one hundred, we've already flexed it seventy, we have two more checks coming in. So yes, we are gonna go over.
Right, but I'm just thinking, looking to the future. And again, we've always been very conservative and underestimated how much we actually would get, so I think we're safe with that.
I did go off on the, the DB. I budgeted three fifty.
Okay. Okay.
I just felt comfortable with that.
Right, right.
I thought if you think it's gonna drop a lot, then you tell me and I'll change it.
Right. Yeah, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm just hearing that, and Jonathan shared that, um, across the state.
I mean, if it, if it drops, it, it, it's based on a percentage, so until the county collects it, we can't really tell what.
That's right.
What we're.
That's what I told her.
Right, yeah, I know that, I understand that kind.
And I just feel comfortable, I mean, if we budgeted on two eighty four in the DB, you know, already with two checks out there, and it already hit two hundred and seven. And we're only shy thirty on the B fund. I think we're being still conservative, even if it drops.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I agree, I'm just processing out loud. Because the sales tax is such a significant part of our revenue. So I think I'm doing it for the, 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 the board. Um, fund balance. I don't know if that was shared at the last meeting.
What do you mean, I don't know what you're asking.
Um. If the town board members are aware of the fund balances for funds ABD, ADB.
And what they anticipate, I would think they, they should be aware, because I hand up a supervisor's report, and basically, whatever's free and not in a reserve is your fund balance rates that day. I mean, I pulled up a balance analysis for you, which, which I pulled tonight, because, um, I know last year you wanted to look at them. But it's basically, the fund balance is free cash, anything that's not earmarked for a reserve, there's not one down, so correct. Anytime everybody looks at their supervisor's report, even if they look at the complete supervisor's report, you can see what's in your cash, and you can go to your revenue, and you can go to your expenditures, you can say, see where you are today and what you have left based on your budget, so you can do the math and calculate it, so they, unless they don't know how to read the, I don't know, the supervisors, but it's, everything's there, every single month with anybody to see where we are.
And the connect is to look at our budget and look at the page that has the summary. So that looking where we've got the unexpended fund value. Um, it's recognizing that one would wanna know, well, how much did we have in the fund balances? And that's all I'm doing is just.
Are you talking about the front page of the budget?
Correct, it's called the summary page, yes. Yep.
Okay, um.
So.
Did, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I, I just wanted to make sure people understand that. Um, if you look at the summary page right now, the budget says this is what we're taking from fund balance. And that thus, it's important for the board members to know what are the fund balances, the projected fund balances for the, especially the four different funds.
Right, and I know if you go to meetings, they, they say if you're using fund balance and you're not putting a good budget together, but we, we know what we're doing, some of the expenditures that we have put in there, we're thinking about taking it out of the reserve, because we've had these reserves for like seventeen, eighteen years. And I know we've talked to Andy and I, Lisa, um, when we start doing things, let's, let's get rid of the reserves and start, let's use the money, not keep dumping money into it, because when you put a reserve together, you're supposed to have a five-year plan, what you're gonna do with it year with reserve, and what you're gonna spend it on. We are just sitting there and we talk about putting money in the reserves, like, we need to start spending the money. You know, you just don't carry it for twenty years, and just, what are you doing? The, the only thing that's doing is you're taking money out of fund balance, you know, and then you're saying, well, I'm using a hundred thirty five thousand of fund balance, well, maybe if you started using the reserve, we wouldn't have to use this money out of fund balance, that's what I'm saying. So we have some healthy reserves, and I think Andy wants to start using those reserves and start over again, and start over building the reserve, and having a five-year plan of what we need to use that reserve on. Right.
I'm ready, yep. And, and the thing is, the, the, the thing that you have to be careful with, especially and, and it was with Dan, at the controllers, that I had this conversation. Um, especially with the one that's seventeen years old, he flagged that to me immediately, because it's outside that five-year window, we get audited. They'll take. So.
Don't use it, you lose it. Okay.
Unless you take it and disperse it, and then you can always create a new reserve account, if you have a need for it, you can create a new one. If you need, have a need.
If we ever discussed town board member bonuses, I just. As long as we're here, I mean.
Well, I would say right away, I would say highway, a truck, I'm gonna say a reserve put fifty thousand a year in, that's two hundred fifty thousand, and then buy a highway piece of.
But that's what we've been doing, is buying equipment, and we're budgeting for it to buy, like, some of these, these figures that I was gonna put in here, and you're talking about using this much of a fund balance.
Right.
Well, because we're, really, we're probably not gonna use fund balance, because we wanna start using the reserve.
Right.
We have earmarked and, and put in here, um, computers and IT, other IT screens, and there was something else that we put in.
Windows.
Windows, so that's showing.
Not windows for a computer, windows for.
Right. And he says that because the insurance company was.
Yeah, the insurance company, I'm thinking I was.
So.
You know, seventy thousand dollars for windows on the computer.
So it shows it coming out of fund balance, and actually, we're, we're gonna use the reserves, we're gonna, we wanna start getting ready at the reserves and start over again, and have a, a game plan and a.
Okay, is that reflected in this twenty twenty five budget?
That's what I just said, the, the, the whole thing with the fund balance, it's looks high because of what we're gonna spend, and they're not showing coming out of the reserve, they show it coming out of fund balance, that's what I was trying to explain.
Okay. So I'm in the budget, so highway equipment, is that one of the reserves? Um, would it show up in the budget, or is that something you do separate from that?
I'll do it separate, but what I was trying to explain is, we're, we're making some, you know, expensive expenditure, purchases out there, and we decided we'll use the reserve, but we're taking it out of fund balance, because we're budgeting for it in here, but what I'm trying to say is, this one thirty five might not be really one thirty five, because we're gonna look at a fund, our reserve, and we're gonna do
Okay.
you know, a resolution to use that money.
Got it.
So it's overstating.
Right.
I did talk to Williamson Law Book, so at one point, they had this set up, so you could say I'm gonna use this out of the reserve.
Right.
So you'd have that separate column, so it wouldn't show it's coming out of fund balance.
Right.
They don't have it anymore.
Okay, I thought they did, I thought I remembered that.
Well, I know I did it for Randy Lawrence, and he said people were confused, so I kept doing it, and then I tried to bring it back, and I, I didn't get it to come back, so.
Okay.
Ted didn't even know what I was talking about. So anyways, but we did try that, Andy and I talked about it, and I says, hey, let me see if I'm, if this still is, you know, a function with Williamson Law Book.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, on to another note. I sent out the water sale agreement for Aqua, for the bulk water for District two and three. Did, um, you all have a chance to review it?
Yeah.
Okay, because since we're all here. Um, since we're, since we're all here, are, if there are any questions, I just wanna have a motion to sign this. So that, because this is one of the checklist items that we have to have for breaking ground.
I'll make that motion.
Well, I.
Hold on.
And then discussion, well, you put it on the table, now we can discuss it. Um, because you said that for now it would be for Water District, please see the attached bulk water for the supply of water in Water Districts two and three. Water District three is currently supplied by the villages, we know, and will continue to be for the time being. So I'm not an attorney, but we're the, um, even on page one, whereas the area depicted in Exhibit A includes Districts two and three. Um, but you're saying it wouldn't include three.
Not immediately, it is set up to include three, because Fair Haven will not be able to supply us with District two in the future. So we needed to have a contingency, should that happen, so they put District two in here in this contract, so that we don't have to go back and do a new contract that's under this contract.
Right, so they took three in.
Yes.
Right. Okay. Right, I just didn't know legally, it made it sound like.
This has all been through Kevin.
Okay. Do you see what I'm saying, though?
Yeah.
If Aqua says, well, wait a minute, what do you mean, you're not doing, we're not doing three right now, but you're saying.
No, they understand.
Okay, and this contract reflects that.
Yeah.
Okay. Karen?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Okay, any other items? Okay, any other items?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Well, wait, I just, I'm sorry, we're not raising taxes? Are we, are we just talking about the budget or are we answering?
Oh, no, was there a tax?
I remember I, my, my, I talked to you, and I think I even made a mention that I haven't touched the taxes. I, I know I did that right at the beginning, if you guys don't want to touch the taxes and don't want to increase it at all.
I didn't. Well. I thought you had put in.
I didn't, I didn't, I always leave the taxes alone because I don't think that's a decision I should be making, and we have a tax cap. And, um, we can go up to nine sixty-one, so you can raise them about forty thousand. But I, I, I usually don't because I let everybody go through this, and I mentioned that when I first came.
Actually, we had that discussion, folks started to meet.
That's why.
That's why Andy was here.
I know, I know, but I also sent him a text to say that we should sit down because I said we're raising taxes. So I, if you're okay with that raising taxes. That's not my call, I just let you go. Here's our tax cap, and you can go up to nine sixty-one, we're at nine eighteen.
With the reassessment?
I have no idea where it's all going to land.
Okay.
It won't affect this budget anyway.
It's true.
Would it affect our budget for 2025?
My numbers will be first seen in September and then in January of twenty-sixth.
Right, right, so when she sets off the tax bill, she.
If I do the tax bills, it's going to be.
For right now. This January, correct, my numbers won't.
Yours won't go for the final year.
But. If. If we raise it now, it would potentially. Still be a raise. No, definitely, that's not.
Sometimes you have to just say it out loud and realize that, no.
Yeah. No, that wasn't.
Normally, we raise taxes and we save the tax cap.
Correct.
Because it's easier to just do what you can do than to go back.
Right, and I, yeah, yeah, no, and I thought that's what you would put it.
No, no, I said, that's why I was telling everybody I don't touch the taxes, and I, that's why I text you before I came here, and you said you can't, because I didn't touch the taxes. I just, when I put these together, I don't feel it's my decision to do that, I own for the tax cap report to say this is how much we can go up. And you guys decide if you want to raise the rest of the taxes. I always say, at least go to the tax cap, but.
When the tax cap's nine sixty-eight, now the budget's not high.
Nine sixty, nine.
Sixty-one.
Nineteen.
And we're at nine eighteen.
Correct, so that was just, I wanted to put it.
You had to get, I was going to say nine twenty-five.
We're at nine, we're at nine eighteen, you can go to nine sixty-one.
What's the difference? Yeah, because that all these cushion, because if we didn't, it would.
Well, I was even thinking, if we went to the limit, I mean, we're allowed to do that. Cost of living and everything, because it shows on this budget, it's last go around, that we're going to use a hundred twelve thousand of fund balance. But I guess, I, I know too, we're going to buy equipment, so that's, but I'm just saying, I don't know, usually. It's your call, it's just, I don't know, you, we are allowed by the state to go up to nine sixty-one and stay on, stay within the tax cap.
So if we did nine thirty-eight of the twenty, we have.
I'm up for splitting the difference, that way we're not taking every dollar we can get.
Right.
Um, what's the difference of what we?
That's fair. Nine thirty-eight.
Which fund do you want to, you want to raise in the A or D or split it?
Please, well. State passed a few days on that.
It's either one, you raised taxes in the A and D.
Yeah, I know, but. But I'm saying it would be more sense.
Well, the only reason, like I said, when you look at this, this summer, again, I understand that we have a couple purchases in there. Which shows to make this budget work, we have spent a hundred twelve thousand of fund balance.
So, so my thought, um. The reason I'm saying A fund and not DA two.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, I, that's, that's on.
No, no, I, I, I just wish, I kind of wish Kurt was here, but. I would, because. I don't think that the. Transportation. Is going to be as affected as what the A fund would be, right?
Well, when I pull the, pull the analysis of fund balance and where we are today for the A fund, it shows that, um. We began, we went into the year seven forty, if we stay on, on track, we'll be at six fifty-three. In the DA fund, we went in at six oh one, if we stay on track, we're going to go to five sixty. So right there, there's a hundred thousand difference, and, and, and maybe you do want to throw it at the DA, all the, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, their equipment's more expensive. I was going to pull a report showing what reserves we have.
Could, could you give me that last number again, the DA?
We went in at six oh one, six hundred, and if we stay on track, we'll be at five sixty. But, you know, we do five dollars sometimes expenditures, but that's just what the fund balance analysis shows. DA and DB equipment is, you know, more expensive than A unless, and we know we're doing the windows and we're doing the IT stuff, and we had that earmarked in there. It is.
That's true. Here, if figured out with the tractor that we bought towards the run. While we're going to do that, we have to keep it.
Yeah, but I think there was talk of maybe buying another, or something.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, we, we haven't got a price yet, but. I'm just saying, if it's looking for places to put money, I'm sure Kurt would love that. So we could, we could end up splitting between the two. To. Split it between the both.
Have you ever transferred from A to DA?
No.
No, it, it can be done, that's my understanding from the training, and that's for, you can't go DA to A, but you can go A to DA. I didn't know how easy, difficult it is to do.
I've never done it at any town.
Okay.
I've always transferred B to DB, I, I never asked the question, I never been asked, if you know you could, we can do that.
Only from training through a OSC, that, that's right.
I never had anybody ask me to do that.
So, right, just that thought, I wondered if you'd ever done.
But I don't, um. I don't know why we want to do that.
Right.
Well, right, I think, but it's possible, so, but if we put it. If we just did fifty percent to A and fifty percent to.
Yeah, I, I don't, I just wanted to make sure that we had a discussion on the taxes.
Thank you, no, what, what do you think, what do you think? Uh, I would say it's split it between the two.
Yeah.
Yes.
Worst case, now, we can transfer right away, had you had a woman in the county or not?
You can only, she's saying you can transfer only from A.
Only from A, you can't take anything out of D.
And like I said, I, I'm going to look that up, and, and I guess you two are aware of that, I've never done it for any town ever. Only B to DB.
Another piece of information that I did today, and it's off on a tangent perhaps, but I took my twenty twenty-four tax bills. And my, um, the total for my tax bills on my house, seven thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars. Eighteen hundred forty-nine dollars of that county taxes, which is twenty-five percent. My town taxes, five hundred eight dollars, that's seven percent. Hannibal School taxes, forty-nine seventy-nine, that's sixty-eight percent. So I didn't include special districts, fire, water, library, college, it was strictly the taxes. I would encourage you to do that because I know that we do the town part, and people say, my taxes keep going up. Recognize it, if it's similar to my situation, it's typically going to be school and then county, and especially county from what I'm hearing.
Well, I don't think we'll ever pass school if you want that.
No, right, right. But, um.
So can I get a motion, well, go ahead, but.
I catch myself from time to time, penny wise and a pound foolish, do you think? The ability to raise up to nine six.
Nine sixty-one.
Nine sixty-one, by stopping at three eight, are we being a penny wise and a pound foolish? Being that we're going to split this fifty-fifty into two? I don't know where it equates into dollars, and I don't know. I love the idea of not maxing out what we're legally capable of doing, I love the idea, but we also have expenses in the town.
I know, and that's why I always encourage, if you can do the nine sixty-one and just take a launch.
To take every dollar we can get, I, it's just my brain fart, it doesn't work, but.
But if you don't, then maybe next year, you, you've got to go over the tax cap, and that really doesn't look good.
Right.
Right.
Because something goes on behind the scenes, like when you cannot take it all, remember those, what I can add and what I can't add and all that, and they always encourage that I move it forward, I don't know.
So, do you want to go to the max?
I, the more I sit here and contemplate in my pea brain, I. We do, we need money, and that's our only source of revenue.
And there's, um, a lot that needs to be done, that's why I do, I, I. I used.
That's not me trying to talk anybody into it, I'm just, as long as we're having the discussion, I, I catch myself all the time being ultra-conservative, and it, I don't personally, if I need to buy.
What do you think? I want to get to the.
I know, my right.
Lose it, either, right? We don't need a backup against that wall, then we can get creative material, I'd rather know ahead of time what we need.
Yeah, but, and then you big on a tractor and.
Yeah, so.
I remember Kirk's discussion last week about possibly a tractor.
Yeah, so I think you're right, I think, I mean. You convinced me. I had, yeah, let's.
Wait, wait.
Nine sixty.
Well, I had a conversation with Carol Francis, probably twenty years ago. In the supervisor's office, she was an auditor from the, um, OSC. And giving me guidance on the budget. And she said, what I heard her say was, for starters, don't drop the taxes, the tax rate. Um, it's better to do a little bit, one or two percent. Than not.
And that's why I keep encouraging.
Because people don't notice that, exactly, Pat, so that would be the camp, the mindset I had, and she said, and never drop the taxes, people don't remember that. So it's about, it's better to do a little bit than to do what Hannibal Central School did probably fifteen years ago. And we had like thirty percent, something crazy like that, and because it's, but, uh, it's been done on balance. Town of the Swig up, back, um, I, I don't think we were there, their fund balance was a little over twenty thousand dollars.
Town of Swig up isn't.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, they come, but I'm just saying that, that.
I just encourage it anyway.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing, um, is I think we have come to consensus that we're going to raise it to nine sixty-one.
Damn it, let's take your money.
All right, so. All right, Charlie made the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Raise, say it again.
Raise to nine sixty-one.
With the tax cap, nine sixty-one.
So that's forty-three, three, ten, fifty, did you want me to, um, split it?
Yes.
And split.
And split.
So forty-three thousand, three, ten, fifty is what we're going to raise taxes, not going to split it between A and D.
Between these two, okay. Erin? Yes. Pearl?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Joan? Yes. Andy?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, then.
Who's in favor?